This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our city council meeting for August 12. And with that, I'll call the meeting to order and we will just take moment of silence as Jorge will put flag and everybody can recite the pledge allegiance to their themselves and their own homes. Thank you.
Liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jorge. And we have Mary this evening taking minute, correct? So, Mary, could you do all call, please?
Dick Olson.
Here.
Mike Sykes.
He's here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Rich Kellum.
Yeah.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Bill Coburn.
And Bill's accused.
And Sharon Canopa.
Here. Okay, thank you, Mary. Okay.
We do have a couple of public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is our 2019 and 2021 supplemental budget. And that, 7:16 PM, I will open the public hearing. And that would be J.C. Rowley. I believe you were on. Where'd you go, J.C.? There you are, up on the top screen.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to recognize our senior accountant Brett Tezen, who pulled most of this together. I'm just here to present it for you guys. So, the report that you have in your packet is pretty short and brief. Most of this is CARES money due to COVID-19 that obviously we did not have the planning for way back when we created the budget back in June. So, this would be in addition to those and hence requiring a supplemental budget. So, about $2.2 million is through the Oregon State CRF, which is the federal money that was given to the state of Oregon. We have, if you remember in previous meetings, there's about $220,000 that I believe Jeff Blaine gave or came forward with some other CARES money through CDBG. And then there's also $100,000 through the DLCD as well for about $2.5 million in grants.
Is that? Is there any counsel questions of J.C.? And I think we're getting some feedback. You're not going to talk if some of the folks I see audio still on. Okay. Have questions? All right, not seeing any. So, there was not anybody that had submitted public testimony wanting to comment on this budget. Was there anybody that was online that wanted to comment over the supplemental budget? Not seeing anybody. Okay. And if there isn't any other questions, counselor, counsel, then with that, I will close the public hearing at 7:19 PM. And counsel, you have a resolution that starts on page four through eight.
Move to approve the resolution.
I second it.
Second that.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Feedback from somebody.
Somebody. I think it's Bessie's. Is Bessie's yours?
Yeah.
No?
No, she is not.
Any idea where that was coming from? That was loud. Okay. We have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, all right. Got that supplemental budget passed and thank you, J.C. Thank you. Okay, next. Well, this is script, folks, so this is going to rezone property on Highway 99 at Allen Lane. So, on our tonight's agenda is a quasi judicial public hearing regarding a zoning map amendment from neighborhood commercial NC to office professional OP on the unaddressed property identified as Lynn County Assessor's Map number 11S-03W-30, tax lot 400, planning file ZC0120. I'll to order this quasi judicial public hearing at 7:20 PM. If you wish to testify, there would be two options available which were described on the agenda. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact? And do any members wish to report a site visit? And do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Okay. And does anyone wish to challenge the participation of any council member in this hearing and decision? If so, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called on. And Jorge, you seen anyone? Nope, I don't think so. Okay. At this time, I'll call for the reading of the meeting proceedings. And David, are you trying to read that or do you want me to?
I sure can, Mayor, yes. Good evening, council members. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designated responder to issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
All right, thank you. And at this time, I'll call for the staff report and planner Travis North. And I think Travis is on. Yes, Travis.
Thank you, Mayor. Jorge, can you make me presenter so I can share my screen?
Yeah, hold on a second. You are. You can be presenter now.
It's not, it's not letting me share. Still saying become presenter to start sharing your screen.
Hold on now. Oh, hold on a second. But now.
Yep, thank you.
Welcome.
You're with me here, folks. Okay, can everybody see that? Just a PowerPoint presentation.
I can't. There it is. I got it now. I see a white thing that says zoning.
Zoning map amendment? That's what you should be saying. So, just, I can't see you though. So, if you have questions, just speak up and interrupt me. That's fine. Okay? So, it's a zoning map amendment as Mayor Canopa said, CCO120 and the meeting date. The process is a quasi judicial zoning map amendment, a type four process. The decision making criteria are listed in ADC 2.740 and are addressed in the staff report. Agency notice was given DLCD within the 35 day timeframe. Public notice was provided to neighbors within 300 feet of the property. It was also listed on the city website and the property itself was posted. Went to Planning Commission on July 27th. They recommended approval. And we are here tonight on August 12th, which may be the final decision. Summary zoning map amendment, change of 5.42 acre property from neighborhood commercial to office professional. The comprehensive plan designation is light commercial that includes as a compatible use both the neighborhood commercial and the office professional zone designation. And the property is within the footprint of the South Albany area plan. Sure you're all familiar with it, but surrounding land uses, the college, the target distribution center. And to the east, we have mainly farmland. What is that portion of the South Albany area plan? And some residential kind of way up there in the northwest. So, key differences between the two zones, and I'd just like to remind you that as a zoning amendment, we do not have to have a development proposal submitted along with the request to change the zone. So, it is important to know that, to look at the application based on all of the uses that are allowed in both zones and make a judgment off of that. Even if they did provide a development proposal, which they did not, things could always change and whatever is allowed in that zone would be allowed no matter what. So, key differences. Manufacturing production, small scale manufacturing in industrial offices are permitted in the OP zone where they are not in the NC. Drive-through restaurants are not permitted in the OP zone where they are in the NC. Multi-family development of three or more units is permitted in the OP zone with a conditional use approval, whereas they are not permitted in the NC zone. And single family detached units are permitted outright in the OP zone. They are permitted in the NC zone, but it does require a site plan review. NC zone intent and purpose, it's a little bit out of the ordinary for us to provide this, but staff felt it was important to just kind of step back and look at the very basic intent and purpose of each zone. The NC zone is typically appropriate for small clusters or service centers located at intersections within residential neighborhoods. Businesses should fit into the residential pattern of development, not create land use, architectural or traffic conflicts. And new NC zones, so if you were creating a property today and giving it an NC zone designation, maybe no more than 30,000 square feet, this property is significantly above that. So, we thought it was important just because NC zone is typically kind of, you see it tucked into, like it says, kind of a residential neighborhood. It's meant to give, provide services to those residential neighborhoods. And this property kind of out on arterial street and kind of in this eclectic mix of commercial and industrial and residential doesn't exactly fit that profile. The OP zone intent and purposes seems to fit a little better. OP zone is intended to provide a vertical or horizontal mix of professional offices, personal services, live-work, residential and limited related commercial uses in close proximity to residential and commercial districts. Typically appropriate along arterial or collector streets as a transitional or buffer zone between residential or more intense commercial industrial uses, which is kind of what this property is doing. It's located on 99, obviously in arterial, and it has industrial to the, to the east of it there and the residential to the west. So, we felt like it was important just to call those out that the property itself seems to fit the intent and purpose more of the OP zone. Statewide planning goals, these were addressed in the staff report. Goal one is citizen involvement. Goal two, land use planning. Goal five, natural resources. That comes into play because it does have some wetlands on it. Goal nine, which was the big one where we spent the majority of our, our time and efforts, was economic development. Goal 10, housing, we touched briefly on that. Goal 12, transportation. And goal 14, urbanization. That is another one that we addressed a little more heavily in the staff report, just given the fact that that's where the Albany South area plan is tucked into. So, the Albany area, South Albany area plan mentions in the staff report and organizational framework. Think you can see my cursor down here is our property. Yes. And I'm told the kind of focus, and you can see it in the organizational framework of the plan, is kind of around this area here, creating these residential nodes. And this area, although included in the plan, kind of wasn't given as much thought or as much focus. So. So, the conclusion staff reach was the proposed amendment will remain consistent with the city's comprehensive plan goals and policies. The proposed amendment will not affect implementation of statewide planning goals. And staff recommends approval of the proposed zoning map. So, that concludes the staff report presentation at this time. Anybody ask questions? I don't know if it would help if you want me to stop sharing my screen or leave it up.
Yeah, Travis, it would because then I, so I'd be able to see all the counselors. Alex had a question.
Okay.
Yeah, on one, yeah, thank you, Mayor. You had one slide that said no drive-through restaurants or drive-through. What is that? What was justification for that?
So, to be clear on that, counselor, if that is already existing, the NC zone does, let me see. Sorry. Just going to make sure I'm accurate here with this.
Because this is out by the, just north of the target distribution center, correct?
It is, yeah. So, so, drive-through restaurants are not permitted in the OP zone, whereas they are permitted, I believe, with site plan review in the NC zone that it's currently zoned. So, if this was to be zoned, office professional, drive-through restaurants would not be allowed on this, this property.
And my question is, why is that the case?
It, so it, so just to be clear, it has nothing to do with this application. It's just a long time ago when people established the zones and what uses were allowed in them. They didn't think that drive-through restaurants were a good fit for the OP zone. If I had to take a guess at it, it's because they didn't want that zone being used up for drive-through restaurants. They wanted it used for office and professional uses. But other than.
So, my question is, so is Starbucks or Dust Rose? Or would that be considered a drive-through restaurant or is it coffee service or what would that be classified as?
If they had a drive-through, then it would be considered a drive-through restaurant.
So, after we established that zoning years ago, it's a lot of the neighbors didn't want to have something that was going to be a high, really high impact use because you still have some homes in that area. But, oh, because we looked at more, drive-through restaurants would be on the piano property that we called just north of that of Ellingson, the 36th, that is regional commercial. And then you've got a traffic light right there. No matter what use would come into this area, you best turn right because it's pretty challenging if you're going to try to turn south from there.
I live out here, so that's my question. So, a coffee shop could open up as long as they had sit-down, not a drive-through, but a sit-down spot, right?
That is correct, yeah. In the, in, to be just specific on it, in the OP zone, restaurants, no drive-through, require a conditional use type two review, which is a staff level review that if somebody wants, they can call for a public hearing, members of the public. But it's permitted. It just requires a conditional use review.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other counselors have any question of staff? Not seeing anybody. So, we will now take testimony from the applicant, applicant online. Would you, if so, would you please state your name, address and make any comments that you may have for the council? Let's do, you know, if there's a, I rec, all the names except there's a caller on the phone.
So. I never got confirmation from Dan that he would be attending. So, he may not be on.
Dan Watson?
Yeah. He didn't say anything at the last meeting, I can tell you that.
All right. And so, then we will now be taking public testimony. There wasn't anyone that had signed up previously, but if there was anybody that was online, and then that would be taking testimony for in favor first and then opposition and anybody neutral. But I don't know if we have anyone online that wants to testify. So, can somebody turn your camera on, wave your hand, or, but I recognize every name up there except for who is caller 02? Anybody know? So, evidently, I don't think we have anyone. Correct, Travis? Confirm that.
Yes, we were not given notification from anybody who wanted to testify.
Okay, all right. And so, since there is none, there is no, staff does not need to respond to any testimony. And so before we close the public hearing, any procedural questions, counsel, you have of this application? With that then, at 7:37 PM, I will close the public hearing. And counsel, you do have some motions that you can, that are in you in your packet and also, or you could, if you're in support of this, we could have our city attorney read the ordinance. That's on page 42. What would you like him to do?
I'd say let him read the ordinance.
Okay, all right.
My second that.
Ordinance on page 42.
All right. I look like my head is cut off here, but I'm going to have to adjust my camera. I see my, my neck. Let's see. There I am.
There you go.
All right. An ordinance, amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the city of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings for the property located at Lynn County Assessor's Map number 11S-03W-30, tax lot 400.
I moved up the ordinance you read a second time and tied the line.
Second. My second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Same sign? Okay, second reading, please.
An ordinance, amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the city of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings for the property located at Lynn County Assessor's Map number 11S-03W-30, tax lot 400.
Move to the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
My second.
All right, any discussion? Also, Sean, a procedural question here. So, there was a motion to adopt, but we know we always need to do our first reading and second reading. Is there any language that was in the motion for adoption? That, I believe everything was put into that ordinance that you just read.
Yep, we, we should be fine with this.
Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign? Okay, motion carried. All right. And hang on, I got one more script to read here. Okay. Quasi judicial decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal, not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days following adoption of an amendment or new land use regulation, the director shall forward Department of Land Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted text and findings and notify the department of any substantial changes which may have occurred in the proposal since any previous notification to the department. Okay, all right, we went through that. That one's done. And next page, business from the public. There wasn't anybody that had signed up except Peter.
We're going to. Mayor, we did, we did receive an email from Heidi Dundas. And I think you all have received that email as well as a few others. So, I just wanted to bring that up. It is, she did want to speak in business from the public or at least communicate. But I know, Mayor, that you have plans to bring that up for discussion, add that to the agenda at the end of tonight.
Yep, yep, we can discuss that at the end and that's what she was told that we would. So, okay, all right. Anyone else popped online? That is part of that. Nope, eyes everyone. Okay. And next is adoption of the consent calendar and council item D4 is being pulled off. So, that's the proposed council meeting schedule for November and December. There's a few changes that'll need to be done, so that'll be brought back at our next council meeting. So, D4 is to be removed. Is there any other items needs to be removed? Dick?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question about number E2, about the cops hiring program.
Okay. Any other items need to be pulled off for discussion? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to accept for, for D4 and E2.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. And let's see, we don't need to discuss for D4. But Dick, what, what would you like to say on E2? That is on page, council 61.
Hey, look, so we're going to hire a cop for three years. And then we have to agree to keep him on for a fourth year, which is always nice to get free money. But I'm wondering, does this commit us to not laying anybody in the police department off during those four years? In other words, can we, can we hire this guy in at the front door and lay somebody off at the back door? Or do we have to keep everybody? I like to hear Chief.
Chief, he's on.
I'm here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. There are some provisions about retaining that position at the end of the fourth year. It's not a, it's not assigned to a specific person. It's assigned to a position. We all know that we're heading towards a shortfall here shortly. We have some contingencies in place if we find ourselves short in non-sworn positions. So, we retain that particular grant funded position. There's no obligation to repay the money at the end. It would, it's just requirement for us to receive grant money that we agree to those conditions.
So, is this a sworn position or a non-sworn?
This is a sworn police officer position. As you recall, we had originally asked for three. We reduced it to one on the chance that we would not have the funding in place eight year four because of the budget concern. So, we just, we dropped that request down to one. And that is a risk that we can absorb by adjusting some non-sworn positions in year four if we find that we cannot retain that grant funded position.
Okay. Seems like it kind of ties our certainties. So, I'm not going to move to adopt it. Can you repeat, counsel, can you repeat that? I'm not going to move to adopt this, uh, item, uh, E number two, in the consent calendar.
I will move to adopt it.
I second that. Okay, motion's been made, and there's a second, and Alex, did you have a question at the beginning?
No, I just have a, a question for the chief, so if we keep this person, this position available, open or filled for three years, we have to address that in a three-year time period?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
So, listen, I heard three years, so we put them through training, get them on street second year, we have to address this in four years, correct?
Correct, it, the money is available to us in the current federal fiscal cycle, so we would, upon your approval, immediately start trying to fill that position, we currently have four vacancies in the police department, and immediately need to fill two of those, and we're in the process of testing now, and then that clock basically starts at the moment that we accept the grant fund.
Who's that static, do we, we don't, so this is a grant, not a loan, correct?
Correct. No obligate, there's no matching, as you recall from the original proposal, there was a potential of matching funds from the city, we request a waiver from the Department of Justice, and we're granted a full waiver, so the city is under no obligation for those three years, the federal government's fully funding the grant position, we just have to maintain that position starting in the fourth year and moving forward, we're only obligated in that fourth year.
And we have to maintain all those positions, is that correct?
Correct, we have to pay, the moment that we accept the funding in this current fiscal year, we have to retain that same amount of police officer positions, or move positions from non-sworn to sworn.
I think we're one turning.
And that's for, that's for the four years, correct?
I'm sorry, it's for the four years?
We have to maintain all those sworn positions for the four years.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, and I'm wondering, can the city manager tell us how, what he predicts for our, our budget in the coming four years, my crystal ball is extremely foggy these days, and I'm wondering, are we gonna be better off financially or worse?
No, my crystal ball is equally as foggy as yours, but we're not going to, we are all looking at what we briefed you on before, which is approximately thirty FTE reduction, but that, the, this position is, is not one that's gonna prevent us from making those adjustments if we have to, it's, that position itself will have to stay, but there, but Marsha has plans for making other adjustments if, if that comes to, if that eventualality comes, comes to fruition, so I wouldn't, I, I sense your concerns about being, having your hands tied, but they're not gonna be tied in the, in as big a sense as you think they are.
Well, is she right, that we're gonna have to maintain all these sworn positions that we now have for the next four years?
So if we have sixty-four positions, we won't need to, we won't be compelled to keep sixty-four positions.
How many of those are sworn and how many are non-sworn?
Oh, the sixty-four are sworn, and I don't know if that's the exact number, Marsha, it's around that right now, sixty-two or sixty-three?
We're at sixty-one right now.
Question?
Alex?
So this, this is for one position.
So how many non-sworn positions do we have?
Are we talking about four positions or one?
There's a bunch of statics there, I didn't hear the answer.
Yeah.
I didn't hear the answer, how many?
Okay.
Counsel Johnson, there's one position, this is only for a grant fund for one sworn police officer position.
Thank you very much, all, because he's saying four, Counsel Olson's saying four, I mean, I thought it was just one, so yeah, one is fine.
Only one sworn position in our police department?
No, sorry. Counsel, also, I was answering a question from Counsel Johnson, we, we have sixty-one, I believe, current sworn positions, currently there's four police officer vacancies, so there's four of those sixty-one that are not currently filled, this grant was requested to try to offset the rollback of FTEs that we incurred in the current fiscal cycle, and try to keep our staffing as high as we can for three years as we navigate any potential solutions, so it's one position that is fully funded by the federal government for three years, we have to take over that funding in year four and moving forward from there.
Okay, and then, my question is, do we have to maintain all the sworn positions, or can we maintain this one guy and lay somebody off another sworn position two years from now if we're running into trouble? Can we do that?
If we have, if we have problems at the end of those three years, I have some room with our non-sworn positions, which there's about thirty of those, to make some adjustments in the budget to keep our police officer staffing at that level.
So we do have to keep all our sworn positions if we accept this money?
Yes.
Yeah, and for that reason, I'm gonna vote no on this.
Okay, all right, there's a motion and a second for item E two, any more discussion? Say aye?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye, is that just, was that one, just one, yeah, Bessie, I think it is your mic for some reasons causing that static, and you said you were on your iPad tonight and not your computer?
Yes, I am, so.
Wow, weird.
It really is, so I'm keeping the mic off as often as I can.
Yeah, because we all have the same iPad, so must be some sort of internet wifi interference that you're picking up, but, yeah, okay, that's too bad, next we have staff report, and thank you Chief for responding on that, city manager's office staffing changes, this is on page seventy-two, and Peter, I'm presuming you wanna chat about this item?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much, so when Marilyn retired recently, we had to shuffle duties around and take care of as many of her duties that were formerly held in, in her office, including communications, code compliance, community and staff engagement, and then with Allison Grove's departure for a career opportunity, we had to do a lesser version of the same thing, so what this reclassification acknowledges is simply the, the distribution of those duties to, to each position that remains, and that is Matt and Holly's positions, so the increased responsibilities that they get are just being recognized with this reclassification, and this memo is provided to you just as a information, so you know what's going on in, in the office here. Any questions on that?
Yes, Dick?
Yeah, I've gotten used to calling Marilyn if I need the phone number for somebody, who do I call now?
Well, if you, if you need a phone number, there's, there's, there's a lot of ways to get ahold of that, and Holly would probably be the best person to call.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Rich?
Yes, we have basically information officers in various places, they used to be Maryland, and then we had in the fire department as well.
Right.
Is there some reason why we have to have more than one? I mean, I realize there is some, kind of some lingo that each one speaks, but if we're not talking about any, you know, it seems to me like it would just be cleaner if we had one person that would always be the information officer, so no matter who it was, they'd call that person.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I follow your logic, and there's certainly some sense that, the, what I would say is that the, the world of work in which these people operate now, in which I operate now, is one that makes more demands on community engagement, it makes more demands on, on an exchange of information with our citizens, not just a pushing out of information like the historical model is, but actually pulling information in, so that has enlarged that world of work substantially, that, does that mean that we couldn't consolidate into one, one office for the whole city? Not necessarily, but as you point out, within the fires department, they speak a very different language, they have a very, very different set of skills and priorities than they do perhaps in, in any other department, so we could do it, and, and, you know, as, if, if we continue to have to whittle down, that's a potential for the future, but at this point, I would have to tell you that to reduce our ability to engage the public is, is probably, is, is very disturbing for, for me, I, I'd like to actually increase that if possible.
Well, I wasn't suggesting that we decrease the amount of information coming and going, simply suggesting that maybe there'd just be one person who does it for the entire city, and that person would be more specialized, have fewer other duties, is all, just process.
And that person does take the lead, and I would point out that within fire, that person is also the deputy fire marshal, within police, that person is also a police captain, so, you know, it's, it, we, we try to, in many cases, people are wearing several different hats, but certainly here in the city manager's office, that person, the public information officer or communications officer takes the lead for the city.
Okay, next.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move to approve.
You know, it's just an, Mayor, it's just an informational memo, we wanted to, you don't need to approve, I'm happy to take your approval, I hope we have your approval.
While everybody, their thumbs up, you're all, everyone's okay? All right, we got her, okay, thank you Peter, and, is designation of legal organ cities voting delegate, and I plan on attending, it's gonna be virtual this time, and I did, I did attend the, the mayor's conference, which was virtual last week, and it was not the same like when we usually go to a conference, but, but there was, you know, they had some good speakers, so, and it was shorter, it wasn't as much business, you kind of missed the networking with other elected officials, and, but in other words, there was still kind of the same substance of information that you can get, same presenters, so, and so I'll be attending that, I don't know if anyone else is, but you do need to name a delegate for, to vote on the annual business meeting, which usually is just for the slate of new officers each time, so, Bessie?
Yeah. Yes, I won't be attending, so I would, uh, move to let Mayor Canova be the delegate for the LLC convention.
Okay, all right.
Second.
There's a second, okay, and with that, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, I'll make sure I've already got it on the calendar, I won't forget, but boy, looks like it'll be a, a quick one, it's not as many days this time, so, and thank you, okay, next business from the council, and Dick, you're up on the top of my screen.
Uh, no thanks, I don't have any.
All right, okay, Mike?
Yes, got a call from a gentleman that lives out in North Albany, and guess what he was upset about, Crocker Lane, he understands that it had to be shut down, but he didn't feel that the notification process was, where everybody understood what was going on in a, in a timely manner, after thirty minutes on the phone with him, he was, he was okay, the only thing is, is he says it took him a long time to find somebody to talk to that knew what was going on, and the notification of that shutdown was kind of frustrating to him, so I also told him to, if he had a problem, to call Peter like we were told, so, but I think I got him calmed down.
Oh, good, good, thank you, thank you for doing that, so, okay, Rich?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing, okay, Bessie?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, and Alex?
Um, I'd like to thank Marsha Hardin, or Chief Hardin, and HRC, Scott Lally reached out to me when he saw the pictures of the incident at Premier Apartments on Facebook, and I was happy to hear that, you know, there's discussions happening, I'm glad that Stephanie's here today, I don't know if she's talked with them about it yet, but I did reach out and spoke with the woman that reported it, and Marsha Hardin, and I think is having a meeting with her, at least discussing it with her, and so I do appreciate the response from the city, Counselor Sykes and I had a long discussion, and we actually went to the properties, and we saw the damage to the pickup, and so, Mike, I appreciate you working with me and coming out and seeing that mess with me, but it's something we need to stop in this city, and it's, it's abhorrent behavior, and, and I'm glad that Chief Hardin's involved, Peter, Peter Trothin's involved, and thank you for reaching out to those folks, so I appreciate it.
Yep, yep, thank you Chief, Alex, was the, was the paint removable, or did it permanently damage?
Well, the vehicles had the paint removed for the most part, but the pickup had areas of it was on plastic, and they could not remove it.
Oh, wow.
But we spoke with a young man that told us that he had never seen that before in that area, but he was one of the first people that saw it, and, and he was concerned.
Oh, yeah, I'm bet.
Anything, Mike?
So.
No.
Okay, all right, is that it? Thank you, okay, so next then was over, everybody's seen some emails coming from Heidi Dundas over her drone concerns, Peter, did you want to link off on that, please?
Well, I would say that you all have seen her emails, and you understand, I think, she's concerned about city use of drones, she's concerned about, from what I gather, privacy issues, and she's concerned about affairs with one of her neighbors, so with respect to the city's use of drones, I'll tell you that we, within the police department, we do not have a drone, within the fire department, we do, and public works, we do, and then Parks and Recreation also has one, unmanned aerial systems are becoming more and more and more commonplace, you, you will find many people using them for a multitude of different reasons, and we're, we're using them as well, within the city, each of the users who, who operates an unmanned aerial system is Part 107 certified by the FAA, and they're certified to the commercial level, not the recreational level, so it's a higher level, so I can assure you also that Ms. Dundas seems to think that, or she has asked if city drones were airborne on the first or second of June, and that is not the case, and then as far as operating drones in the vicinity of, of her neighborhood, that the Albany Municipal Airport is within five miles, but it's Class G airspace, and that is uncontrolled airspace, which means that there is no tower at the Albany Airport, nobody at the airport to call and give permission for flying there, so a certain, a separate set of rules applies to UAS flight in, in Class G airspace, and they're, they're fairly permissive, you have to stay below four hundred feet, you have to avoid flying over people, and of course, you know, the local regulations apply as well in terms of privacy laws, the FAA also turns to local law enforcement to help them out, because they don't have an enforcement arm except for very significant commercial air carriers, and that's, that's about it, I will, if you have any questions, Marsha's here too, and she's ready to address any questions you have, I would just say that we have tried to help Ms. Dundas, and responded to her several times, and Marsha can address some of those if you have any questions about it.
Any questions, Bessie?
Yeah, so what can she do? I mean, if she has drones flying over her property, which has apparently been going on for a long time, what can she do? I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want a drone flying over my property either. And I mean, I think it's neighbor to neighbor, uh, issue, but what can, what can be done?
Yeah, you know, she's, uh, she has called the police and, uh, and, and made a, a complaint to them and they have looked into it. You know, I don't, I, I want to point out that this is a developing, uh, world, right? I mean, the regulations keep, keep getting, uh, they keep changing, so. Drones can fly. They, they are not, uh, you know, that, that those privacy concerns we talked about, they are not allowed to take pictures, uh, of other people's, you know, in their, in their backyards. Uh, but it's hard to prove that that actually happened. And as we get into an enforcement field, I would defer to, to Marsha as well.
Marsha, did you want to address that?
Yes, um, it, we, basically if somebody's flying a drone, uh, and harassing another individual, we have to meet the elements of the ORS in that regard, uh, and, and that has been alleged, but we've not been able to substantiate that that's occurred. Uh, it is, is not uh, something that we could ever substantiate happened, uh, and we would follow up on any new complaint or harassment if that were to be the case. When they're flying at two or 300 feet, it's very hard to tell what they're actually looking at without looking to see whether they're recording it. Uh, and Peter, if I can make one small correction, you said that we did not own drones. On June 1st and 2nd of this year, we did not own uh, any UASs. We are currently in ownership of two of them and are, are not flying them. We have a policy in place. We have to meet FAA licensing requirements before doing so, and I'm happy to go over the policy if anybody has any questions.
Okay, um, Mike, did you, do you have a question?
Well, I was gonna ask, uh, chief if, uh, she feels like if, uh, we have, uh, responded to her requests and have satisfied those things to your, uh, satisfaction, chief?
Before I became chief, so Chief Latanzio, um, was involved in some of them as well, and staff has reported to me that we have, uh, responded or engaged in Ms. Dundas on a number of occasions. She is also has, uh, some interactions with Lynn County Sheriff's Office, the FAA and that, and, and basically received the same message that, uh, these are very difficult to enforce, as Peter mentioned, it's emerging technology. There's few areas where you have strong enforcement, uh, overcrowds is one, uh, and commercial flight patterns is another, so it's difficult. We have to be able to prove that somebody's using it to harass her. And that, we have not been able to show that that's occurring, uh, but we have been responsive to her, but I don't honestly feel, I'm not sure we can say anything at this point that's going to appease her, give her the answer that she's looking for.
Yep. It is a tough situation because I have mentioned to her over and over that you need to have evidence that's gonna have to hold up in a court of law. You know, that's like thing. I mean, a, a officer can't pull somebody over for speeding unless they've got it down on their radar gun machine to prove if they, you know, were speeding, so anything's gotta have some evidence, but, um, I have actually, because this has gone on for over a year and as of this morning before today's emails and, um, I didn't respond to the several this afternoon, was 271 emails that I have received um, over this issue, so. And I know Bessie was probably com- copied on almost all of them also, but, um, we've tried to address the concern, there's just not that we can do. Um, I think what she wants is us to do some sort of action, enforcement, um, and I think council, you need to make the choice of whether you want staff to, um, pursue this, um, anymore or, or not have staff put any more energy into this. And, um, she, if she really wants some changes over drones, I guess she can go through an initiative process with the state, get a ballot measure, make changes statewide. Um, there's always even the initiative process for a ballot measure to change our charter, but as we all know, that is a very cumbersome process, but I don't really know if there's much more that we can do at this point, so. Um, so with that, council, would you like to provide some direction? So, yeah, Rich?
Well, I was just wondering, I mean, you've gotten 200 and whatever, however many, uh, emails about it. Um, do you have a suggestion? I mean, I, I would not want to be, it's, it's kind of what happens to the mayor. I mean, when you're, you're the, the one that people call. Uh, do you have a suggestion?
Yeah, so actually copied on a lot of that. I did talk to FAA. There was nothing that, you know, we had a phone call. There wasn't anything that they could do to be able to, um, you know, address her concern. Um, there was, um, every one of the messages have been tried to be copied with our county commissioners, to our senators, um, state representatives have been copied. Um, and then I think you guys just kind of got into the mix just recently. She was copying all council, but I know Bessie's been copied, I think, from day one too, but I mean, I would, I would suggest though, um, that we just, you make a motion that you, that, um, you know, her complaint has been addressed and there's no need for any further communication from staff. So, um, uh, that's what I would suggest needs to be done. In other words, there's, if this could just keep going on and on arguing it and the same information, but, Bessie? Yeah.
Yes, has, has anyone actually sat down and met with her and talked with her, or is it just all email? You know, maybe, I mean,
No, that, there had been.
I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say that, uh, Marsha might be able to, to tell about, uh, visits that officers have, have made, or at least one officer. Um, and I have, I have spoken with her. Somebody's got a sign going.
Siren, yeah.
Yeah, no, you know, the, the, uh, the emails that have gone back and forth, uh, between, uh, staff and her have been supplemented by a, a couple of, of visits and, Marsha, can you address that?
Yes, we, we have been out, uh, or in at least correspondence, uh, with her several times. Um, and then I came on board in January, February and nothing new had changed at that point, so we did not engage her any further other than in writing. Um, but we have been out there before, uh, and again, it, it, if a new incident occurs, we can take a look at any new incident. But anything in the past, we've already taken a look at that issue and there's nothing further that we can do for.
Okay. All right. Counsel, did you, you have Dick?
Has she been able to take any pictures of these drones? And are they, um, the kind a person would have, uh, in his house, or are they, uh, the kind that a, uh, law enforcement or somebody else might be using?
She has, uh, she's taken a video and the mayor has asked her, uh, to provide that video a couple of times and today she has said that she would put that up on her Facebook page, so I have not, uh, I have not seen that. But, uh, it's a, we'll, we'll have to take a look and see if it's something that, it's like 14 minutes long, so. I can't tell you if it's something that you can tell numbers on.
Peter, can I interject here a little bit? Um, having a little bit of a history with, with drones over special events at my former agency. They're very difficult to identify from a distance as to what, whether they're a personally owned drone or a government drone. Obviously, some of the, uh, law enforcement drones can be quite large. Uh, but typically that's not what, uh, you are gonna see out there. Most are made by a company called DJI. Uh, and they're, unless you have a device that can tell you who the device is registered to or, and if they have an FAA license, which you have to contact FAA to confirm, it's very difficult even, even to identify the operator of it. And I can say from personal experience in dealing with large crowds at special events where people put up drones like for 4th of July. It's nearly impossible and it's illegal to fly a drone over a crowd like that. It's nearly impossible to identify that drone operator. So that's kind of our, our other challenges that we have not ever been able to confirm who's actually flying the drone. And even, I believe she says that in her emails as well.
Okay, thank you.
And her, um, in June, when communication, the last before this round, I had told her to produce the video. I thought maybe she would have done it. And, and then this time, all these, I mean, I don't know how many emails there has been the last several days, but they did not, um, you know, I asked, kept saying, we need evidence, we need evidence. So just probably a few hours ago, she said, well, she could post it on Facebook. But if she can post it on Facebook, then she can just still email the video and send it in and, uh, that, and the police department can really analyze it, but you can't get it off of Facebook to really be able to, to analyze it, so. Um, so, yeah, it's been asked over and over, over a year to provide evidence, but, yeah. So, um, so Rich?
Yeah, I, I have empathy for her having a problem. I don't know what we can do about it at this juncture with all the various agencies all taking pieces of the pie. Uh, I feel reticent about, uh, saying, well, we're not gonna talk to you. Um, I mean, at some point, maybe she needs to be told who to talk to. Um, when there is a new thing. I mean, making sure that she understands that the, the level of evidence that is needed. Um, and the fact that the guy next door, um, is doing something or, you know, uh, it, you know. We're in a bit of a pickle here. So. And, uh, you'd know that better than the rest of us, mayor, with, with 400 or 200 or however many emails. I mean, we can't tell them, no, we're not gonna listen to you. Um, I mean, imagine somebody having that, you know, if somebody's breaking the law or they think they're breaking the law and the police tell them, no, we're not gonna, uh-uh, no, we're not gonna do that. That's not who we are.
Well, she's been told many times, I have stated, that we're just gonna have to agree to disagree and just put this to rest, but it keep, she doesn't take that for an answer. She keeps coming back and it's the same information every time in the emails. It's gone on a year, year and a half, but. And Bessie, you wanted to weigh in, she can contest every email.
I, I, yeah, I have quite a few. I mean, I have deleted the past ones, you know, because I've read them and stuff and I haven't read the last group that we got today, but um, I agree with Rich that we can't just not do anything. I mean, maybe it would help if uh, Peter, counselors, you know, I mean, I think she's in our war, Rich, you know, uh, yeah, I can't be surprised. Um, but, um, I'm thinking maybe if you sat down with her in person, maybe that would make a difference because, you know, just by hearing, um, no, there's nothing we could do about it, or like Rich says, you know, if somebody's trying to do something illegal and she can't provide a, I mean, it's, it's kind of a no-win situation, but I think we need to try to do something. Um, even, like I said, I think setting up a, a sit-down meeting with her somewhere, social distancing or, or maybe say, okay, we'll address this as soon as we can, you know, get together type thing. Um, I hate to just say, no, let's just blow her off. I don't think that's the right way to go and yet we don't have an answer either, so. If it's illegal to do it, I mean, I don't think, I don't think she's seeing a big butterfly up there. I think there's something there, but hopefully maybe she can produce the evidence, but, you know.
Butterfly. If you want to set something up, somebody wants to set something up, I'd be happy to come and sit down with her, have coffee, whatever. Um, and, you know, it's, obviously you and I are not gonna be able to do that. We're gonna have to have a staff member there.
So it depends on how much more staff time you want to devote to this. I do know from before Chief, you know, Harden came on, I know our police department tried and tried and tried. Captain Heinrich was the one that was working, but, I mean, I'd find she wanted this brought to the council. Um, I, if Bessie and Rich want to sit down and meet with her, you are more than welcome to sit up at the resolution. Um, I would hate to see that you'd be putting some of this on to staff. I'd recommend then you talk to FAA and meet with the area representative and, and, um, because he's tried all he can to. So I would recommend that you two can go ahead and take the lead on that and let, if you guys do not want to just have a motion that states we, we understand the concern, address it, but, um, but anything in the past has been addressed. If there's a future in, incident, let, let us know, but everything in the past has been addressed, but it's up to you guys, what you want to do.
Well, FAA doesn't have authority below 400 feet. I mean, that's kind of on the top of this.
Counselor, tell them, they, they, they do, they do have authority down to the surface. Let me just offer to go with you and, and Bessie if you want, if you'd like to, and we can, we can move on from there. We can plan that out.
Okay.
That's a, that's a good idea.
Okay, all right. You didn't have anything then, Mike?
Well, I, the other option is just to write a, write a letter and say, you know, to whom it may concern, this has been fully investigated the last year and a half and there is not enough evidence to do anything and we consider this matter closed. Um, this inch, it closed. Um, if you have any further information, uh, new information or other instances of, of drones, please bring it, bring it to our attention. Other than that, the matter's closed. But I like the fact that Rich and, 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 and Peter and, and Bessie are willing to meet with the lady. That will be an interesting conversation based on what the email said. But might as well go that way first before, um, we go down another path, but. In my opinion, this has already been addressed. And I have full faith and confidence in, in our police department to, to do what needs to be done. And I don't think, I mean, there's conspiracy theories going on in her emails and everything else and, and so maybe we'll just, like what you said, Bessie and, and Rich and, and Peter, meet with the lady and, and see if we can't get her out of the treetops.
Okay, all right, so we will let you, um, take the lead on that. And so, Bessie, you have her email. Um, or I can just respond back that she can con, um, the two of you will be contacting, setting up a time, or with Peter, two can do that.
Mayor, I do believe you are smiling bigger than I have seen you smile in two years.
Got to start beginning to sit down and meet with her. Didn't want to, massive emails. I've offered it, so good luck.
And, and Peter, do you want to reach out and set up a meeting? I mean, I'm free pretty, well, it's gonna depend on when we can and, and how we can.
Yeah, I can send her an email, certainly.
You have her email too, huh?
Well, there's Peter, yeah. He, you, you were up on top of my screen and now you came to the middle, so I laughed there, so. Okay, um, that is it that I have. And Peter, did you have anything else this evening?
No, I just wanted to draw your attention, the fact that the August 24th work session has been canceled. So I give you one Monday night back.
Okay. All right, sounds good. And anything else? Staff have anything else? I'm not seeing any. With that, then our next council meeting would be August 26th. With that, we're adjourned and everybody have a good evening.